I call the Planning Commission meeting for June 27, 2021 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Samantha, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cicero?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Hadden?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
As you can see, the public is welcome again to attend the Planning Commission meetings in person. These meetings are no longer offered through video conferencing, but they will continue to be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Coronavirus pandemic restrictions are still in place, and Council Chambers has a reduced total capacity of 41 people. Social distance seating is in place. Fully vaccinated people do not need to wear their masks or socially distance. If you are not fully vaccinated, you are required to wear a mask and socially distance. If overflow attendance is necessary, we will have space in the lobby to wait until your agenda item is being discussed. If you wish to speak about an agenda item, you need to complete and submit the form at the Council Chamber's entrance table. During the meeting, you will be directed to speak at the appropriate time. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank and acknowledge Mr. William Snow for his many years of service to the City of Mener. Mr. Snow has submitted his resignation from the Planning Commission effective immediately. Bill served on the Planning Commission from January 1989 to December of 2005. He was appointed to council and completed an unexpired term from January of 2006 to December of 2007. Mr. Snow was reappointed to the Planning Commission in February of 2010 until his resignation in May of 2021, and for the past nine years, he has served as the Chairman of the Planning Commission. Bill is absolutely irreplaceable. His wealth of knowledge, sense of humor, and integrity are one of a kind, and his humble leadership made us all strive to be our best. Bill personally encouraged me to step outside of my comfort zone to express myself and take on a leadership position. I feel very fortunate for the time I was able to serve with Bill. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I would like to acknowledge a sincere appreciation for Mr. Snow's commitment to the City of Mener, especially for his 28 years of service on this commission. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I've been on the Planning Commission for six years, and Bill made me feel welcome. He encouraged me to express my opinions. He supported me in my opinions. He became a friend, and I'm going to miss him. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 6, 2021. Samantha, will you call the roll? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Samantha, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Epstein.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have six public hearings, and we will follow this format. First, the applicants will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some may just have questions, and we will try to get those answers. With that in mind, we have a conditional use permit to allow rental truck facility at 8647 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Will you please come up and state your name and address for the clerk? Tell us a little bit about what you would like to do.
Well, I'm John Zikolam with Enterprise Rent-A-Car, in this case, Enterprise Rent-A-Truck, and we're just basically seeking permission to operate our rent-a-truck business here on Tyler Boulevard. Very minimal improvements to the site, just a couple of things to make the flow work the way that we would like it to work, and redecorating the interior, not even so much doing the exterior, and then really, that's about it. It's a pretty easy one this time.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Is there anybody here wishing to speak against? All right, this public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, other than the conditions noted.
Anything from the fellow councilmen?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question.
Mr. Varga.
The colored site plan that we have here shows an area of parking in front of the facility. Yes, that's it. And then between that and the street, or the front property line, it appears to just remain grass, correct?
On the site plan, C-102 that was provided, it does show, I think it means proposed, but
it shows paving all the way to the fence line. So which is it?
What that's intended to show is there's an existing, kind of an odd strip of grass in the interior of that parking lot, and we're just looking to, and I think we've discussed with the director, just making an aisle way through there so that if somebody pulls in, the idea is that we're going to use the, I think, eastern side as an entrance and the western side as an exit, and if somebody pulls into that front parking lot, a customer or what have you, I want them to be able to get to the other driveway to exit. So there's no intention of moving any or creating any additional asphalt outside of the fence, if that's what it conveys.
No, I'm not concerned about outside the fence. It's just that the first image shows that there would be just a single, well, it shows an area of green between where those cars are parked, right there, where the arrows, that shows green between the parking area and the fence.
Correct, and that will remain.
Okay, because here on this one drawing that I mentioned, it shows it as being paved or future paved, I'm not sure. And so I just wanted to know what the resolution is between those two images.
Your guess is as good as mine.
If you look at C-102, and you look at the paved area that's darkened, it shows it right to the fence line, it looks like. Well, maybe there isn't a difference. No, it's all right. I think it's fine. Yeah, I withdraw my concern. It looked like it was written to be proposed, but it's not. Yeah, I see.
We all set?
Yeah, it's fine.
Is there anything else from the commission members? I'll entertain a motion on the conditional use permit.
I'll make a motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second. Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. At this time, is there any other discussion on the site plan portion of this proposal? Anything from the commission members? I'll entertain a motion to vote on the site plan portion.
Make a motion with the two conditions.
Second. Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a conditional use permit to allow limited retail activities at 7620 and 7640 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Will you please come up, state your name and address for the clerk, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Brendan Thompson with Northeast Factory Direct. We're at 7620, 7640. We're currently using that location, we're renting it right now, using that location for our hot tub and swim spa warehouse and storage location, and then running deliveries out of that location. Due to the high demand of hot tubs and swim spas that we've seen as of late with everything going on, we were looking to use a portion of 7640 as retail space, like a little bit under, 25 to a little bit under 25% of that front location.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody here that would like to speak against this proposal? Okay, this public hearing is closed. Is there anything from the administration?
We received this floor plan late. It is listed as one of the conditions, looking for a unit floor plan, just to differentiate between the two spaces. The space in the back of the building, which is the largest space, is all warehouse, and they're noting that they intend to use only the front portion, which is of, I believe it was 7620, that address, which would only have the display area. So I just wanted to acknowledge that for the record.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything from the commission members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this conditional use permit.
I'll make a motion to approve with the three conditions.
Second. Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Conditional use permit to allow outdoor dining and/or drinking at 7851 Reynolds Road. Is that applicant here? Please state your name and address for the clerk.
2894 Wakefield Lane, Westlake, Ohio, 44145.
Thank you. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
So BB Bob Asian Girl is going to be taking over the old Chipotle building, and they would like to reimagine part of the exterior of this building to reflect their brand. They're going to retain the existing brick, a lot of the existing storefronts, and they're going to plant a new entrance tower that will replace what is currently a fin, I think is the appropriate term, sorry. So, an entry tower to replace the fin. So I brought here with me samples for you guys to take a look at.
We'll get to the site plan. Right now, we're just going to just go over the outdoor dining, drinking.
Oh.
That's just for the conditional use permit now. We'll come back to that.
Okay. And then we did take note of all of your comments. Thank you for providing those ahead of time. And we'd like to propose, in lieu of bollards, putting in these large concrete planters. And I've brought with me a photo of those planters, as well as an updated site plan of where we could place them. They weigh about 1,200 pounds each, so they're probably even better for security than bollards are.
Do you have a picture of them?
I do.
If you put them on the table there, I think they can.
Site plan and photo.
Just give us one second, it's our first time back.
Are those bollards secured to the ground, or are they just freestanding?
They're freestanding, they weigh 1,200 pounds.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would just say that we have to have engineering take a look at them, per the code, they're supposed to meet AST F3016 standards, which I'd like to go over today, but we can take a look at that as part of the building permit review.
Sure. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is that all you have on the outdoor dining and drinking for now?
Yes, and just to confirm, there will be no alcohol served on the patio.
Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against? This public hearing is closed. Anything from administration?
No, nothing else at this time.
Anything from the fellow commission members? I'll entertain a motion on the conditional use permit.
I'll make a motion with four conditions.
Second. Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. You know what, while I got you up here, let's go ahead and do the, we'll move you right into new business, the architecture review, reimagine you have a restaurant at 7851 Reynolds Road. So go ahead and tell us a little bit more about the.
Okay, sorry, I guess that's what I went over before. So just to kind of repeat myself, BB Bob would like to reimagine the outside of the Chipotle building. They're going to retain the brick and the storefront, and they are going to introduce a new tower element that reflects their branding.
Okay, thank you. Anything from administration?
We did have a question. On the rendering that's there up at the top left corner, to the left of the tower, yeah, that material, that's existing on the building. I guess we were just curious if that was going to be upgraded in any way. It looked a little tired in the pictures we had, or if that was going to remain the same.
So one of the three panels will definitely get replaced because it's currently like that tarnished Chipotle look, so we have to replace that one. And when the architect did the building survey, she did not seem to think that they were in worn condition and necessary to replace them. They certainly want the outside of this building to look nice, so if we find that it's changed since she's last been there, we'd certainly be open to doing that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question, actually, for the city. One of the conditions had to do with the metal coping, and I don't know, I couldn't tell from the drawings and stuff where the coping had to be replaced.
Well, I believe, if we have a different.
Yeah, I think it's number two, that's the condition number two on the architectural review.
So on the new parapet, the new tower at the very top, we were suggesting that that metal coping carry along the rest of the building.
What aspect of it?
Thick coping?
That was just our recommendation, yes. Not the orange, but just the.
No, the aluminum at the top of the tower.
Because it is thicker, as opposed to what's already on the roof line, which is thinner.
So you like the height of it?
I don't know if that bothers me. I don't know if that bothers me. It might require them to get a roofer out there and have to redo all the flashing at the edge of the parapet, I'm not sure if that's.
Recommendation, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could pass on that.
I could pass on that, too.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I do have a question on the aluminum replacement you're doing. If it doesn't match the remaining two, when you get the new piece of aluminum, it's probably not going to match, I wouldn't think.
We're going to bring our storefront contractor out there to take a look at it and see what the best thing to do there is. I mean, they're trying to save on cost by just replacing the aspects that are damaged, but if it's not going to match, then they'll end up replacing it all.
Can we make a condition that, pending at least administration's approval, that we believe it matches, too? Just like your architect may believe, we also believe it matches.
Condition.
So I'd be adding a condition to make sure the three aluminum panels on the left side of the front all match, regardless of how they get there.
Is there anything else from the fellow members? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Cook?
A motion to approve with four, removing the previous number two and adding the additional proposed one.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Cicero's was actually fairly clear on his condition. I just want to make sure we've got all the words correct. So I believe it was three aluminum panels on front elevation shall all match?
All, yes. To the approval of administration.
Okay, okay. With the approval of the administration, and I'm just, okay.
I will second that motion.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you. Good luck.
Do you want me to leave these for any reason? No.
We have a conditional use permit to allow a multi-tenant commercial building at the height greater than 35 feet on Mener Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please come up and state your name and address for the clerk, and you're going to be here a while, it looks like.
Well, and I'll admit, I thought we were going to go over the site plan first rather than conditional use permit. My name is Allison Socora. I am the president of Uptown Mener LLC, the developer of Uptown Mener project, which is related to this conditional use permit. My address is 9260 Kathleen Drive here in Mener. If I can just introduce myself a little bit and tell you about the project a little bit, is that possible, Mr.?
Well, yeah, let's try to just get through the conditional use permits, and then we'll do the preliminary site plan.
Let me pass that to the architect, the best person. This is Brandon Klein. He's from Geis Construction.
Good evening. Brandon Klein with Geis Companies, Director of Design Development. Our address is 10020 Roorhutson Road, Streetsboro, Ohio. The first conditional use, I believe, is building height. The project consists of a multi-story building with varying heights. A majority of the building is a four-story structure. The other half of the building is a three-story structure with a few patios and terraces. The project consists of demolishing and raising three existing buildings with new construction of the new building relatively on the exact same footprint of the original buildings. So due to the current zoning restrictions, we would need a conditional use for that extension of the height, I believe going from 35 feet to 54 feet in total.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Is there anybody here wishing to speak against this conditional use permit? Okay, this public hearing is closed. Is there anything from the administration?
No, other than, just to clarify for Mr. Klein, we had the building height at 53. It is 54?
53. 53, I apologize, yeah. 54 was the limit with the fire marshal, that's why that number's in the head.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything from my fellow commission members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the conditional use permit height.
Motion to approve.
Second. Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. We have a conditional use permit to allow modifications to the required buffer on Mener Avenue. Would you tell us a little bit about the buffer?
If you go to the colored site plan, might be the best way to depict that. Obviously, we'll go through in detail the project as far as preliminary site plan review and approval, but the project obviously consists of a transformational use of existing properties, multiple different parcels being consolidated for Uptown Mener. In doing such, we're trying to maximize, obviously, the amount of parking and access ingress and ingress to the site. And one of the unique hardships of this site is that the rear sites behind the building are on an angle, so the 50-foot buffer on that angle kind of comes in as like a dagger on the back end of the site, and creates a hardship to an efficient parking layout, which obviously is mostly squares or rectangles. So we're requesting that we reduce that buffer to a 20-foot buffer, abutting any of the residential properties. One of the items that I would note is that the parcel directly behind us is not for residential use, it is the parcels adjacent to that rear parcel, and that's why, on the colored site plan, you can see a 20-foot dash line showing what parcels would require that 20-foot dashing. Should also note that there is an existing privacy fence along a majority of the properties in the rear, if not all, and it would be our intentions that those, it's undetermined at this moment of if those fences fall on our property line or those residential property lines. They are very well-maintained. I know that on the Uptown Mener side, there's obviously a fair amount of foliage at the moment that kind of conceals that condition of the fence, but is a board-on-board privacy fence, and it would be our intentions to keep that privacy fence and make any repairs that are required or needed, or patching that is required or needed, but we feel that that fence does suffice for the buffer requirement.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Is there anybody here wishing to speak against this conditional use permit? All right, this public hearing is closed. Anything from administration?
Mr. Chairman, we just noted, we didn't have a very, we didn't have a good view of the existing fence, so we had recommended that an eight-foot solid fence be installed along the residential property lines. Certainly open to, you know, reconsidering that, but we just didn't have enough information to make that determination.
Well, if the fence that's there, and it's on their property, if it's off your property, I mean, I guess all bets are off, but if it's on your property, how can we, how can the administration verify that some or all parts of it is in good enough shape to save?
We'd be happy to document that, and when we come back for final site plan approval to document that and showcase that, and be able to measure, provide information in details as to what that is for you.
Okay, and if it's not on your property, then we're looking at a whole fence, I guess, at that point.
So the only item that I think that we'd want to talk through, obviously, the residential properties that are back there are doing a very good job maintaining it. In fact, there was a portion because of a windstorm in recent months that we saw one of the residents actually repairing it themselves. As I said, the fence line is literally within, let's say, 12 inches of the property on either way, so putting a new eight-foot fence in front of another eight-foot, you know, six-to-eight foot fence is kind of an unusual aspect, right?
Right.
But obviously, the intention of this is to ensure that we, it's maintained, that it happens, and it's not creating a hardship on any of the residential uses behind this structure, which I think that, based on its current condition.
I agree with you, but if there was an instance where, let's say it's in good shape, and then somebody else moves in there, and they don't like a fence, and they take it down, we almost need, you know, the commercial side of it has to have a fence, so, I mean, I'm thinking we can go over this at the final, but there has to be a condition in there that if that fence gets dilapidated, or somebody takes their fence down, you're on the hook for a fence.
I think we could have conversations, but I think that that's a fair discussion and a fair.
Because fence on fence, I agree with you, that's not.
Yeah, that's the only aspect of it, but as far as maintaining it, keeping it up, and ensuring that it's there, I think is something that we would be very entertaining of.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else from the fellow commission members? All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion on the.
Let me just ask a question, Chairman. So have we amended the single condition?
I mean, I think at this point, we have not.
Table it.
Table the condition.
Table the item.
We asked that you amend the condition to state that, to provide more information, or if we could ask that either we would be required to provide that eight-foot fence or show proof that the. or show proof that the eight-foot fence exists and a condition of?
Mr. Zeman, how can we get a condition here to help us?
I mean, my analysis is keep the condition until such time as information may warrant that the CUP be amended, because, you know, it can, there may be during the course of, you know, survey work or what have you, a definitive answer. And I think to Mr. Chairman, your point, if it's not on their property, then it may have to be some type of a contingency relative to the CUP being issued. You know, unfortunately, it seems like there's not enough information to act, and yet at the same time, it can be noted that this reduction buffer is necessary for the project to move forward. It just seems like, at this moment, it's a bit of a chicken soup condition. It won't hurt anything to leave it in there for now. The project's well away from, you know, going to shovel in the ground, and it can always be amended. It's a simple amendment to the CUP based on whatever information may be more definitive. And that's, and that amendment may be some type of a contingent requirement for the future based on what other further information is developed.
Are you okay with that, then?
If I could just comment for clarification.
State your name and address for the.
Yes, Mike Soccor, I'm counsel for the developer. My address is also 9260 Kathleen Drive, Mennor. Myself and the developer walked the site with Land Design Consultants, which is the surveying firm that's been retained. And the fence is almost exactly on the boundary. At some points, it leans in one direction. At some points, it leans in the other direction. And we did observe one resident maintaining the fence multiple times. So it would be awkward for the developer to place an eight-foot fence right up against a six-foot fence. But I think it would be reasonable for there to be a condition that in the event that that fence ceases to exist, the developer would replace any portion of the fence where it ceases to exist with another fence. It would be a maintenance hazard to have two fences up against one another.
Right, right. I don't think any of us are on board with the fence on fence. No, fence on fence.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zeman?
Not, I don't know, I have no personal familiarity with the condition. So if the issue is that there's a fence there, which would be compliant with this condition, but it's not clear as to which side of the property line it might be on, maybe a little bit of both, it seems to me the condition's met as long as there is a fence there. If at some point in time that fence comes down lawfully because the adjacent, it does in fact belong in part at least to an adjacent property owner, that condition is still operative, at which point the administration, seeing that the CUP is being violated, would notify the property owner, hey, you have to reinstall an eight-foot fence along your property line. Again, it's not mutually exclusive that that fence may be on the adjacent, you know, property. Obviously, no idea who installed it, I guess, at this point, but it does exist, and its existence would satisfy that condition as long as it's there.
You know, the only caveat is that fence is six, I believe it's six feet tall. So if the condition could just be modified to state in the event that that six-foot fence is removed or any portion of it is removed, the developer will replace it with a six-foot fence, just so that it's consistent.
It's, I think the request is for, to modify the condition to six versus an eight-foot fence. That's not a, that's something, obviously, for the commission and the administration, obviously, to review.
If we change the condition to read, "A six-foot solid fence shall be maintained along all residential property lines." We're pulling out the installation and we're adjusting the height to the eight, to the six-foot. Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
From the developer's perspective, yes.
Kathy, would that be acceptable?
Since they're coming in for the modification to the buffer, this is one of the modifications that would be something that you can grant because the current requirement is eight-foot. So certainly at your discretion.
Okay. Thank you. Is that a, do I have a?
I'll make a motion with that modified condition.
So what is it again? Let's say it one more time clearly.
It'll read, "A six-foot solid fence shall be maintained along all residential property lines."
Okay.
I'll second that.
Samantha, call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Okay, we have a conditional use permit to allow outdoor dining and/or drinking on Mennor Avenue. Tell us a little bit about that.
So one of the unique aspects of having a multi-use, mixed-use project of this nature and multi-stories, we are activating the property on multiple different levels. There is a proposed patio, a ground floor patio, and the kind of pocket of, as you can see on the floor plan here, tenant A, at the ground floor level. There's a small roof terrace on the second floor for tenant C on the second floor. And then lastly, there's a fourth floor roof terrace on the front of the building for tenant E. And we would be applying for conditional uses for outdoor patios on those spaces.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Is there anybody wishing to speak against? Please come up, state your name and address for the clerk.
I'm Dr. Farshidov. Sorry if I'm, my address is 8701 Mennor Avenue. I'm the owner.
You gotta speak right into them, yeah.
Sorry. I'm the owner of the building right next door to, in the middle of this project, and also the operator, the CEO of the practice that's housed in that project. And I'm serious concerned about parking issue and traffic patterns. Prior to the pandemic, it was practically impossible to get in and out of the driveway of our building. Now we have a situation where there's going to be this massive building with all this occupancy and added traffic, and also parking has been discussed several times, but there's, there seems to be no real solution to it. I'm also concerned about the impact that it would have on existing businesses. You know, we have people who are struggling with mental health and addiction problems. We have elderly who are coming through, and the mix of traffic and the lack of boundaries have been a serious concern of mine. And I just wanted to make sure that that was voiced to the, it's still an open issue as to how this is going to be resolved. I was pleased to see something was going to go there because of the buildings that are, the empty, dilapidated buildings that are next door. But this project, with its size and the scope, is going to have a significant impact on the traffic patterns, the parking, and the businesses. And frankly, the taxpayer base, the tax abatements that are being offered to this project is coming out of our tax base. I've been in that building for 13 years, paying taxes every year and taking care of our building, and we have now a project this size that is being subsidized to basically compete with existing businesses in the community. The multi-use is restaurants, retail, and we have commercial space. If you go up and down Mennor Avenue, there are commercial spaces that are available. There are vacancies. Restaurants have closed pre and post-pandemic on Mennor Avenue, and the retail space we have down the street, Macy's is closed. So we have all these concerns, and I'm worried about this project going next door. And there's nothing worse than not having anything and having something that doesn't, is not going to succeed, and it's going to create, if it does, it's going to create the kind of traffic that is going to make our business practically impossible to do anymore.
Thank you. Was there anybody else who'd like to speak against this proposal? Please come up and state your name and address for the clerk.
Hi, my name's Richard Orion, and I own Mom Roberto's, which is pretty much diagonally across the street from this project. And I have a couple of problems with the project in terms of the scope and the traffic because even when the churches are overflowing, they fill my lot. That's just one day a week. I mean, we've had problems with parking for a while there. We've also had problems with people in the neighborhood calling on us because of noise violations because we have two speakers that sit in the front of my building. And we leave the radios on at night, and they're not that high. But we've had the police come because people have complained about it. And it's like, we wanted to create a park-like atmosphere. We put plants out, we lay out the building, we put all these benches out there. People are walking their dogs, people from the assisted living, they come out, they sit, they listen to the music. It's a way for them to get away, and we have complaints on it. We have complaints from our neighbors. So I don't know how the neighbors down there are going to help. That's their problem. I do have a problem with the scope of the project. I have a problem with the abatements being given when everybody that has a restaurant out there is either dying on the vine or getting ready to fold. And if you tell everybody you're bringing jobs, you're not bringing any jobs because there's nobody to fill the jobs. If there was people that work in these restaurants, they'd be working in the restaurants that are out there. You drive up and down Mennor Avenue, it's either a for-lease sign or a help-wanted sign. So we just got named the best Italian restaurant for the 10th time in the last 15 years in the city of Cleveland. I can't open my dining room. I've had three applications in the last year. One of the guys passed out while he was filling it out. It was nice enough to put him in his cars and give his keys and call somebody to pick him up. And the other two people, they never showed after we hired them. That's, they're going to be their problem. Whoever they lease it out to, that's fine. I have a problem with the noise thing, and I do know it's going to affect my parking. But if you want to put three restaurants there, I have no problem with that. You can fix the parking issues and stuff. We tried using a parking lot across the street. We approached the city about doing it because we put a party room, and we have 100 seats in the party room, 80 seats in the party room. And we have overflow, and we have no place to put them, and it affects all the other businesses in our shopping center. So we went across, we went to the city, we asked, can we use Federated's parking lot for parking? They stopped it. They said, no way, you can't do it. And we were going to do valet. They stopped that, too. Now I see where the other restaurants down the street opened up, and I'm driving home, and their people are parking in Walmart's parking lot, and they let them do it, they walk right in front of my car. And I'm nice enough not to run them over because they're jaywalking. But if you think, if you get parking down the street or in another lot, that the people are going to follow the rules, they're not. They're going to cross and jaywalk and do whatever they do because that's what they do. They're in a hurry and they want to get home. You can bring other restaurants to the area. That I have no problem with because I'll compete against anybody. I've done it for 21 years. I've seen a lot of people come up and go up against me. A lot of people came into the area to go up against me, and they're not there anymore. But the ones that stay there the longest, me, Zapatellis, Longos, we do what we do. We follow the rules, and we welcome all the competition. But I think the parking's going to have to be addressed because I really don't need to have the parking issues and have the people following and fighting with me. Remember when Papa John's did that thing with the 23-cent pizza for LeBron James? And they're not there anymore either. And that was a nightmare. We had the police in the parking lot for two days because of that. People do what they want to do. But I think, I think it needs to be really, really defined, and the noise issue has to be really defined. And I've done business with this gentleman over here with this behavioral thing, and I'll tell you, he's top-notch. He turned a dump into a beautiful building, and he put a lot of money, and we've hired quite a few people from, that have gotten a lot of help through his people. And I have family members that have gone through his thing, and they're alive and kicking today, and they're sober members of society. And I'd hate for his business to suffer just because somebody else has a better plan. That's all I got to say on it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would, is wishing to speak against this proposal? All right, this public hearing is closed. Is there anything from administration? Kathy, could you, well, we'll get to the site plan later. Is there anything from the commission members?
Well, we're talking about the conditional use permit for the patio right now, right?
Yeah, just the conditional use permit.
That's what's on the table right now. Are we, let me just ask this, we, and I'll ask Kathy this, we're looking at just the patio on the first floor or all the patios?
On three.
Okay. And you're, let me ask the applicant, though you don't have tenants yet.
Right.
What do you envision for each of these three outdoor areas? How they may be used or who might be using them?
The ground floor would be a restaurant.
Okay.
The second floor, we have some interest from an office tenant as an amenity for their employees. But again, that's not a signed tenant yet. It's still a negotiation. And the top floor is really up for negotiation at this point. It could be a building amenity for all of the tenants. It could be for one particular office tenant. It would make really nice executive space up there. Or it could be a small restaurant.
And it's not considered expansion space? No, I'm just saying that for the clarification. These upper patio areas would not.
The building's not being designed for any type of expansion or additional floors or any of that nature.
So it's more than likely the upper patios are not going to be used for restaurants? But you don't know. I understand.
You don't know at this point.
It may not be practical.
As we all know, we're coming out of a pandemic, and outdoor dining is very important. People want open air spaces to work, to dine for amenities. So we're really leaving it open at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? I'll entertain a motion on the conditional use permit.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Second.
Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. We have a preliminary site plan of a multi-tenant commercial building on Mennor Avenue. Now tell us a little bit more about.
Well, just to give you a little bit more information about me, again, I'm the president of Uptown Mennor, the developer of the Uptown Mennor Project. I have over 15 years of commercial real estate experience owning buildings in downtown Columbus, downtown Cleveland, and here in Mentor. I'm here today with my legal counsel, Mike Soccor of Soccora Law. Soccora Law has helped many commercial real estate developers with projects that improve communities throughout Ohio. Also, again, I'm here with Brandon Klein. Brandon's the head of Geis's Architecture Division that prepared the site plans, the renderings, and the elevations for the Uptown Mennor Project. Geis is an award-winning design-build company with an outstanding reputation and experience with many well-known Northeast Ohio commercial real estate developments. Thank you for letting us talk about this site. I'm very excited about it. It's an area that has screamed for redevelopment for quite some time. Uptown Mennor is a transformational and catalytic project in the heart of Mennor in the Old Village District. My company would like to transform what has once been the most rundown, distressed, significantly underutilized area of Mennor for decades. The development of this area has been on my mind for over 25 years since I first visited Mennor. I vividly remember driving by that stretch of Mennor Avenue and being saddened and perplexed by what I saw. I could not understand why that area was in such disrepair with dilapidated buildings and with vacancies. I was also surprised to learn that Mentor did not have a downtown central business district, and this area seemed like the prime place for a downtown central walkable business district. I've been proud to call Mennor home since 2004. I have raised our two daughters here, and I'm excited to now invest my experience and resources to help make a positive difference in our city. This redevelopment project has required a significant amount of time, money, and other resources just to get to this point. Those challenges have included negotiating transactions with multiple sellers, trying to work with neighbor business owners, navigating an extremely conservative lending environment during a worldwide pandemic, and skyrocketing construction cost, just to name a few. Nevertheless, I am pleased that my team has designed a beautiful mixed-use building unlike anything that exists in Mennor that our fellow Mennor residents and visitors to Mennor will hopefully be able to enjoy for many years to come. I ask for your support of the Uptown Mennor Project in the site plan, and I ask that with respect to the proposed conditions, and I let you know that everything is being done, that can be done, to make this a beautiful development, that Mennor deserves why allowing us to effectively manage the budget with realistic rents for that area, why still allowing this project? allowing this project to move forward. It is my sincere intent that this development will spur the creation of a vibrant district with a community-centric feel in the heart of our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrying on from that, obviously, with any project of this magnitude and, and opportunity, there's always effects of it, for the positive, and, and we try to encourage this to, to help develop other areas. There's obviously some additional buildings down the street that are also in fair shape as well, to say the least. I don't know if you'd like me to go through the, the whole project and location, starting from, from the top to get into the site plan approval, but I think everyone's very familiar by now with, with the location and the site and the existing conditions of the buildings that we're looking to, to raise. Obviously, we have our adjacent building owner and occupant in the Carlton Building and the, and the former Mentor Hardware Building, which is a beautiful two-story, two-story structure that we hope that our, our new project complements and also encourages value to both properties. We've taken design elements from that building, we've matched brick to mimic that feel and character, and we feel that all of these will just bring additional value to that block. I can attest that we have gone through countless site renditions and layouts to maximize parking as best as we possibly can with the land that's given to us and acquired. And we've gone through multiple iterations of showing how we can be even more efficient with being able to potentially combine these lots together. But unfortunately, at the moment, the plan that we presented and submitted is, is what we have on the table that we are able to, to provide and proceed with. From a parking perspective, we have provided 175 parking spaces for this site, eight of which of those spaces are on-street parking spaces. But being that this project is and should be considered a downtown urban core, on-street parking should be and typically is considered parking counts for a site if it's directly in front or included within the parcel. It is not, it is tucked into the sidewalk and clearly delineated with those eight spaces, and we feel that those eight spaces should be counting towards the, the total for 175, plus the 167 dedicated parking spaces on parcels that Uptown Mentor either presently owns or is under contract for. Additionally, a mixed-use project is, becomes kind of a gray area with a lot of zoning codes and zoning ordinances, and more importantly, parking ordinances. When you have co-tenancies and shared tenancies, there's peak demands at different times, different hours of operations. Obviously, the commercial aspects are usually during a nine-to-five operation. A retail would be more of a midday or evening hour demand. And then restaurants, obviously, depending on their use, have also different demands in the early evening, evening hours, weekends, and other things. So, there's always studies that are provided via different agencies and different aspects, showing the, the rise and fall in peak demand of what, of what that is. But we feel that we're compliant with parking that has been provided, based on utilizing the Mentor's zoning code and taking a look at the building not as a single use, but as a multi-use. And when we provide 27,529 rentable square feet, again, we're a multi-story building, so we feel rentable usable square footage is the appropriate delineation on a building square footage. You're not occupying a lobby area for longer than just transitioning from one space to Utilizing the office square footage and, and parking count of 3.75 spaces per thousand, that would require 104 parking spaces for parking of this size. 10,958 is the rentable square foot of what we would consider, and as the planning department has noted, as a shopping center use of under 20,000 square feet, would be again, also 3.75 spaces at 42 spaces. Then lastly, Uptown Mentor is also the owners or, is the owners of Citizens Bank presently. I apologize, that just was transferred. And of that space, there's 20 parking spaces that would be required for that lot. In the process of restriping and reorienting the parking of that lot, you get additional, the 64 spaces, and all that totals up to 166 required parking spaces of the 167 provided onsite, eight provided off-site of the 175. So, that demonstration is why we feel we are compliant with parking per Mentor's zoning code, but I think we would further show compliance based on peak demand and shared tenancy. I should note that the parking is all behind the building, fully concealed from public view and public street. The building basically almost runs lot to lot, other than the ingress of the two-way lane traffic inboard. And again, we've gone through many iterations of site planning of trying to show how we could utilize the ingress and widen drive of Citizens Bank to get in and around this site and increase the parking count almost by 50% by trying to combine all these aspects and to maximize the parking. But again, this is the parking area that we can depict today due to land acquisitions. Can I get it going up? The next slide? Sorry.
Can we get the slides to transfer to the monitors? No?
Slides transfer to the monitors? The slides on the monitors?
I was just going through the- Can we get the slides to transfer to the monitors?
In front of us.
They can't see them in front of them.
As I said earlier, it's our first time back here.
All right. It's great to be back, right?
Yeah, it sure is.
Yep, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's, yes, the right slide.
I believe we kind of went through a lot of the landscape plan. Obviously, there's parking rows that are over the 15, 15-space threshold, and the reason really is to maximize the parking lot to gain as much parking spaces as you can. And again, the purpose usually of the zoning codes with landscape islands and other breakups is that these parking lots in a suburban atmosphere are in front of a building. They're the entrance to the building, and you don't want to see a, see a parking lot. The reality is, is that this project's been really designed as an urban core project, something you would see in a downtown proper. Thus, all, the parking lot is naturally shielded by the four-story building in the front, and then buffered by landscape in the rear, that we felt that maximizing the parking spaces within that small lot is more important than necessarily creating tree islands or other aspects there. The rear is where we focused all the landscaping on the site with different perennials and hardy plants that'll be able to survive, being in their, the kind of small islands that they are. Additionally, creating a, a shield of evergreen along that residential buffer line with some maples tucked behind. I know that we're not here necessarily for the architectural exterior for, for the preliminary, but just so that everyone can understand and see the project. The design of the project, again, wanted to get into the, kind of a, a building that didn't necessarily look like a new building, but have a historic feel, but with a modern flair. We did this by utilizing a lot of factory-style windows, which have that gridded feel. Those were a black window. And then, obviously, the brick, as we mentioned, we're trying to pull characteristics of the Carlton Building adjacency, so that Glengarry wine brick, which brought the sample in here, matches up pretty nicely to, to the Carlton Building that's adjacent. Creating activation at the street is important, as we're hoping that this spawns a, a new center core. In the renderings, you can see the multi-terraces that were created at different levels. Again, creating multi-elevations of the, of the building and structure, creating opportunities for the commercial uses or hospitality or retail to be able to have outdoor space has become such a critical aspect of design in today's environment. The rear of the building, selectively placed glazing along the rear of the building, not necessarily to not fenestrate the entire backside of the building, but the true matter is, is that in any type of building, there's always uses that require a more private aspect, core bathrooms, utility rooms, and other functions. By skipping the, each bay window and just placing a handful of bays in the rear of the building allows us for opportunities to ground those bathrooms and other types of components within the interior layout of the space. And so, lining this walls with, with glazing would just be problematic. You can see at the center point of that building on the rear would be a rear entry, so that pedestrians that are parking in the rear can walk directly into the, into the main core of the building and get to where they need to do, get to. Lastly, and I didn't touch on the site plan, but just a, a large portion of the, this parking comes from the Citizens Bank lot. We are installing a new sidewalk to connect the rear of that site to the front of, the front of the site and get people activated on the street in the city of Mentor, on Mentor The materials of the project are consistent of the masonry, Glengarry product, and then three colors of Eiffel Drive-It material. The colors that are, are noted on there are a Sherwin-Williams paint color that matches. And again, we have a sample board here, if anybody would like to see it close up, we'd be happy to pass that around. The front grounds floor is also, has a considerable amount of storefront in a more modern style versus the upper portions of the floor that have more of that factory-style window. I would answer any questions from the board?
Thank you. Anything from administration?
I would just note that the one condition, number seven, should be adjusted to reflect the same condition that you noted for the buffer.
So, it'll read a six-foot high fence will be maintained along the entire rear property I know we're here only to talk about the site plan, but a few things that I had were the downspouts facing Mentor Avenue to be ornamental. If you're not bringing the stormwater down through the building, if you're going to bring it on the outside, just have them be an ornamental.
Oh, the only thing that you would see on the outside as regards to that would be an overflow that's required by code to be visible, but no, the downspouts will be internal to the building.
Okay, and then, you are in the Old Village District, so maybe a little bit more of a design up on the rooftop of a, of a, like a parapet, kind of like the, what's runners got down the street, just to try to just incorporate a little bit more of the, of the Old Village. But I know we're not here to talk about that now, it's just a site plan, just, just throwing that out there, take a look at it.
You're suggesting like, on the Carlton Building, you can see in the photo that's behind you, or maybe on your screens if that caught up, but the cornice, that kind of light tan cornice, is that what you're talking about to the right?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit. If you could incorporate, my monitor's horrible. Something, something a little bit more.
Take a look at that absolutely.
Is there anything else from the commission members regarding the site plan?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
How, how do you propose to service this building? Depending on the variety of, of restaurants and other service needs, how would, how would this building be serviced?
One of the things that was brought up in traffic and, or engineering and fire, police and fire was some turning radius requirements. And in doing such, will it allow us to service the building from the rear? There's a rear, that rear door. In addition, on the back of that building, there's also man doors out the back of each one of those spaces on the ground floor. And lastly, there's a oversized overhead door on the far left side of that rear that potentially can bring in, bring in goods, or also potentially act as an opening for, kind of create an indoor environment that's also outdoor.
So, there's no specific loading dock, or-
No, and, and, and there's, there's not necessarily a need for light commercial office buildings, mostly stuff is FedEx-delivered and postal service-type aspects. You know, you, you end up having occasional deliveries of, you know, furniture on a move-in, but not necessarily for everyday use.
What about like for a restaurant that would get daily deliveries of food materials?
Those are typically done in off-hours, and, and, or at least in, in low, low-traffic periods, and done, would be serviced from the back.
And then, from the, from the city's requirement for the, well, the city's original requirement for parking and the number of parking spaces that you're providing, what, Kathy, what was the difference? Remember, 20 spaces, 25?
It's about, yeah, we had a difference of about 25 spaces.
I'm not real anxious about that, but I do have a question. There seems to be a lot of additional space behind the, the Citizens Bank Building. Have you tried, I know that some of that is a detention area. Is there, you know, could some of that be more efficiently used to provide more parking?
There is, there is potential. Obviously, the good news on that land is, is it's owned by the owner, and it's, there is a large landscape berm that basically almost butts, existing landscape berm that butts almost that edge of parking currently on the far, just below that cursor now, to the right a little bit, right there. It runs basically along, and I apologize, I don't remember the road.
Jackson.
Jackson. But there's a large landscape berm that goes there. There is potential, I mean, for that. And I think also, the understanding is, is that right now, the project's being presented as a speculative format, I mean, and, and a mixed-use setting. In those settings, you're not really sure all the time of what parking demands and other aspects are. Again, it's all speculative, so we're looking at industry standards and other aspects. We feel strongly that we've sufficiently provided enough parking for the demand and the need, but yes, there are opportunities to expand some areas potentially if needed.
Well, my thought is, and this is preliminary, so are we actually going to vote on this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But as a preliminary, you'll be back in front of us for a final. I would suggest that with, for final, you look at the possibility of defining expansion capacity in your parking, because as we had heard, that was one of the main concerns of the, expressed, that parking might be an issue.
Suggesting maybe a land bank?
Land bank, or just a design that allows for maybe some flexibility, depending on the kind of tenants you have, or the issues that develop. I mean, if, if we go down the road and there are significant problems with parking, then, then we would like to see, at least at the final site plan evaluation, an idea about how we could, we could solve future problems.
I think that we could absolutely provide a land bank expansion plan so it could be reviewed and, and discussed, and at least then it's understood what that parking potential could be, if it's an issue.
And Kathy, you, you feel comfortable with that approach for a final?
No, absolutely. I think, I, we actually talked about that previous to the meeting, I think that's a good idea, and, and to add that as a condition, that they would provide additional detail for future, for future parking if needed.
So, that would be an additional requirement?
Yes.
Yes, that would be ten.
So, let's, let's define that condition here. Go ahead and, and-
To, to provide a parking plan that allows for future expansion or land bank spaces. Is that, is that acceptable, stated like that, for you?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and if there is, the good news is, is there's land, that's always the hardest part of all this, right?
That's what I saw.
And it's yours.
And it's yours, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Data? Quick question. How is your parking lot going to be separated from the next of our neighbors, from your-
There is a, an easement that exists right now. If you, I think there is a, isn't there an image that shows the easement referenced? Maybe if you zoom in on that. There is an easement that exists that designates all of the land behind what is now 8693 Mentor Avenue, the former Jazzercise property. It's the small gray box that's immediately to the left of the white area. Yes, that's behind the Jazzercise. All of that land and the white behind it that says Mentor Investments or above it, says Mentor Investments, is all defined as common area in an easement that is of record. And it says that those properties are- And it says that those properties are allowed to use to cross over that land and to park in that land, but it designates that 10 of those spaces in that parking lot of the 28 that are in that parking lot right now are shared spaces available on a first-come, first-served basis. So there are ingress egress rights over that quote-unquote "common area" for the easement, and there is also a right to use at least 10 of the spaces in that lot. So it allows there to be some combination and some harmony. I will say that we have explored with the neighbor to the east numerous options to make it entirely harmonious and consistent, and those proposals have thus far been rejected. So this is the best that we've been able to come up with, given the limitations and lack of cooperation that we've received with respect to a more harmonious plan. We are literally following the terms of that easement, so it provides for that ingress and egress right over that area and it provides for the use of up to 10 spaces on a first-come, first-served basis that are shared. That's the best that can be done, recognizing that the neighboring property owner owns the building entirely where Manner Hardware used to be, 8701 Manner Avenue, but the land behind that property is designated as shared common area per the easement with limitations that are specified, including those 10 parking spaces that are shared. So just fundamentally with respect to a comment that has already been made, just so that everyone understands, there are 28 parking spaces behind that property in where Jazzercise used to be and where the psychology practice used to be, of which 10 are designated to be shared. So there are only 18 spaces that exclusively belong to the psychology practice. That's a 7,000-square-foot building, which is medical office and has a required parking ratio of 5 per 1,000. So there should be 35 parking spaces just for that medical practice alone per code. So there's inherent parking constraints that exist because that particular property unfortunately is underparked. So the developer has done the best that can be done, given the constraints that exist in that particular area, and as Brandon from Geis has explained, is consistent with what should be allowed per code. And the developer has already explored options for potential expansion in the Citizens Bank lot if needed in the future, and will be happy to provide that at the final.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question. If in fact Citizens Bank is not owned by the developer, does a fence need to be put along that rear property too as part of a buffer requirement or no?
It is part of the buffer requirement. It will be.
Okay, so, because.
That condition, because we included that parcel with the notification, the legal notice and so forth, we included both parcels.
Because there's fence not along that rear property that would have to be installed then?
My understanding that there is fence that exists, yeah.
Especially on the northern side. That's clearly visible that that fence does exist.
Looks like there's a couple that doesn't show a fence line. That's why I'm a little bit nervous about not having it installed if there's no fence there now, because we're removing the installed and saying maintained.
Conditional approval was if it's not maintained, it needs to be installed, so we would have to be, yeah.
I think we're covered.
I think we're covered.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I'd just like to say that, you know, here in Old Village, this could be a real shot at the arm. I'm really happy to see this come. Although the complaint we, you know, I come across people and when they find out, you know, I'm with planning, it's always, well, Manner's got this, Manner's got that, but they don't have Willoughby, you know? And I really feel, I just hope that this is just a domino effect right down the street that it could just really turn into, you know, I mean, I hate to say the words downtown Willoughby, but of that feel where people just have that vibe. And I'm just really rooting for you. I really am, so, thank you.
I share the same hope. That's my intention. Unfortunately, I think change is hard for a lot of people.
One change, good. Two change, bad.
Right, exactly. So I fully expected a little bit of pushback, but hasn't prevented me from marching forward.
I can speak for myself. I'm really rooting for you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion with 10 conditions.
Second.
Samantha, please call the roll.
Chairman? Just to clarify, one of those conditions was modified to, relative to the fence? Just, well, the motion should be specific relative to that modification?
Okay, I'll make a motion with the 10 conditions with the modification of condition seven to read a six-foot-high fence be maintained along the entire rear property line.
Thank you.
Can we also repeat the 10th condition?
And the 10th condition will read.
Provide a land bank.
That will provide a parking plan that allows for future development or land bank.
If needed, yeah.
Yes, that's fine.
Samantha, please call the roll. Do we have a second?
Second, yeah, I gave you a second.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Good holiday weekend.
We have a final site plan of a vehicle service facility, Jiffy Lube, at 9595 Diamond Center Drive. Is that applicant here? And if so, please come up and state your name and address for the clerk.
Through the chair, Matthew Pisco, 37704 Hills Tech Drive, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Did you spell your last name real quick?
Yes, Paul I.S.K.O.
Thank you. Please tell us a little bit.
Jiffy Lube Multi-Care Center went through preliminary site plan. We can comply with the three conditions of final site plan approval. I brought sample boards with me, but I think we have them electronically as well if you want those, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Anything from administration?
Nothing, other than the conditions noted.
Anything from commission members?
Do we have color? Well, we have the architectural review. Do final site plan first? Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the final site plan.
Make a motion and approve with three conditions.
A second.
Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. One more. Architectural review of a vehicle service facility, Jiffy Lube, at 9595 Diamond Center Drive. Can you tell us a little bit about the architectural portion?
Most certainly. We moved away from the pink blend to an earth tone. There's two different blends, added a soldier course above the bay doors to try and shorten that EFAS bend, and I have the, I'll admit, I do not have a physical sample board because I thought this meeting was going to be electronic. They told me last night that I was going to be trapped today, so I did have these electronically, which are accurate in color and match the rendering, so I can hand them out or you have it in your packet electronically, I believe. But I have site before, site after, and the architectural rendering before you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything from administration? Kathy?
We actually did not have any conditions to recommend for the architectural. We were fine with it.
All right, thank you. Anything from commission members?
Can we, I'm just trying to see the elevations in color. We've got.
It's a perspective rendering.
Just ignore the signage.
I understand. Is that EFAS?
It is, above the soldier course.
Is it white, white?
It looks white, white in the perspective rendering. It's actually called pure white, so I'm going to go with it's pure white.
My only concern with anything that's pure white like that is that it starts to look kind of shabby after a while, like the dirt starts to come off the signage and it starts to streak. Had you considered anything, I mean, is this a company standard or?
It is a corporate standard, but this is their first steps back into the Midwest. We talk about salt splash, things of that nature, things you're concerned. We can probably go down a couple of pan tones and nobody's going to notice.
I would suggest that you temper that white, white with maybe either go warm gray or, you know, just alter the color. And I don't think, I'd be happy with an alteration from a white, white color, just because I think it looks, it looks fine when it's brand-new, but after a short period of time it starts showing some staining, some, just some dirt, and unless you want to wash your building twice a year, you know, you should probably go to something that's not going to show the dirt so much.
As a chair, we can comply.
Okay, so how, can we just say that you'll go to a gray acceptable to the?
Something less than white, yes, most definitely.
Can we?
Want to say like we soften the white color of the EFAS?
To a warm gray color, and, you know, that'll be more sympathetic with the brick and it'll not show dirt and such. Yeah, so that would be, just, forget about the dirt, just, yeah, we'll go to a warm gray color acceptable to the city review when they, when they present it. I just hate seeing things that are just pure white because it just doesn't work, you know?
Thank you. Is there anything else from the commission members? Here, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, well, the site plan with three conditions and I guess the architectural.
We already did decide this.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We've done the architectural with one condition.
Second.
Can we?
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, the condition should read the EFAS color shall be a warm gray, a light warm gray color acceptable to the city. I don't know if we got a second. Do we get a second?
We got a second, second over there. Thought we had one down there.
Okay, good.
Mr. Tiedemann's second.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Architectural review reimage of a commercial building at 9303 Manner Avenue. That applicant here? Please tell us a little bit about your paint.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Darian with WD Partners 7007, Discovery Boulevard, Dublin, Ohio 43017. Walmart is proposing a reimagining of the building as part of the rebranding for the store. This is part of a nationwide rollout that they are proposing. We are proposing to take the existing paint color scheme for the building and kind of supply it differently. Per the images, we're kind of doing the dark brown around the main entrance, a kind of medium brown at the lower part of the building on the front and the sides, and then a kind of a light brown for most of the building and then a kind of tan above the main entrance. Kind of ignore that blue rectangle with the sign. Walmart is changing that design again for us, so I'll probably see you guys in another month or so with that updated design. And that's kind of, it's a pretty simple reimagining of existing color scheme on the building. There shouldn't be any major changes from what you see now.
Thank you. Anything from administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Anything from the fellow commission members? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition.
Second.
Samantha, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Final site plan of an industrial building addition at 9395 Pine Cone Drive. Please state your name and address for the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Don Plunkett. I'm with Studio One Design Group. We're located at 2451 Stratford Road in Cleveland Heights, Ohio. We are looking at adding an addition to a fairly recent building. They built, I believe it was in 2018, and we are adding a cold storage area portion of the building, a addition where they're going to have their operations with their equipment, and then a covered storage area in the back. And the question came up about enclosing the storage area to the rear of the building, and the owner was concerned about having to do that with similar materials because of the cost when we back up to, what is it, MR, LM, landscape materials. They have dirt piles 35 feet high that they look at, and they don't have a problem looking. That's fine. They're happy with them, but they just thought to spend the money to enclose that area. They don't even really want a fence around it. I said, are you worried about things disappearing? They said, no, it's, their product that they're using is usually heavy pieces of steel, things like that. So I guess that's why we're here. I believe this building was originally approved for administrative review, but since that didn't comply, we're here to talk to you about it. Did I miss anything, Kathy?
Thank you. Kathy, is there anything from administration?
With regard to the rear building, there was a notation on the actual site plan requesting a variance from the new outdoor storage requirements, you know, in light of the comments that Mr. Plunkett made with regard to the adjacent neighbor and the fact that it's so far in the back of the building, I don't think, believe the administration objects to requesting a variance, but that's not the right board to do that. So they would have to go in front of the border zoning appeals to vary from that particular requirement. So that was what we noted in condition number three with regard to that item. We did have a separate item with regard to the existing storage that exists on the parking lot, in the parking lot on the west side of the building that we would like to see addressed in part because it was a condition of the preliminary plan approval of the original building, was that if there was going to be any outdoor storage, that they get planning commission approval for that. And it's still an outstanding item, so we want to make sure that it is addressed.
Thank you. So how are we going to address the shipping containers and the pallets and everything on the site?
What we'd like to be able to do, just because of operations, and it's difficult if we put a fence or gates up to maneuver the trucks and forklifts, what we'd like to do is add screening. There's not a lot of planting in the front, but we've shown on the site plan where we've added quite a bit of screening. Is it going to totally block it? No, but the way we've positioned it, you would only catch maybe glimpses of that as opposed to now, I'm going to admit, it's, as you drive by, you can see that. So, and it's back quite a ways. So, you know, we would do some at the front, in the islands, and then on the two end islands if we could achieve that with that landscaping, and it would be a type of, you know, it'd be evergreen, something that's going to, it's not going to be a deciduous plant or tree that, again, in the winter and fall, wouldn't screen anything, so.
Kathy, do you have a, I'm sorry. Kathy, do you have an opinion either way on the landscaping, the new landscaping?
I guess I'll defer to the commission. I mean, I do see that there has been additional landscaping proposed. Maybe he could, they could work with our landscape architect and ensure that the landscaping is appropriate to give the true screening that we want to see so that when you are pulling That's really the whole purpose was, is to make sure that we, we get that properly screened. So if the landscaping can achieve that, then we would be comfortable with that for that section of the lot.
Yeah, I think we all understand that you're trying to run a business here and, and these are big items.
Yeah.
And you need to move them around and, but you also have to, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, their building, and again, I didn't do the original, but it's an attractive building. I think with this landscaping, it really could, it could achieve a lot of that. It's not going to ever totally screen it just because there's a sight line or two that, again, you would catch glimpses of it. But again, if we added, you know, a large amount of planting, I think we could screen that. And again, during, if you had gates or something like that during the day, they'd be open anyway. So you're not achieving, again, in the evening, I guess you could close it up, but if it was open so they can bring trucks in and move their material, it would probably be open most of the day. So I really felt it was better to try to screen it with landscaping, something that's going to be a permanent screen and still allow them to, you know, maneuver on the site.
Okay. Is there anything from the other commission members?
Just for clarification, we're talking about the area in the upper left-hand corner.
Yes.
That's the area just for everyone.
Yes. I think it's, right now, I think there's two containers that are sitting in that lot that they keep product in.
Let me ask the city. I mean, granted, if they plant those islands with some things that grow up a little bit, that'll help. Had, had there been discussion about putting up a fence, some, say that landscape island to the northern border, an eight-foot fence or, would, would, do we think that would help in screening what's going on in that back section?
Well, there hasn't been a discussion to this point, so.
Okay. I just wondered if it had come up, because that's one of the other things I could see. It wouldn't disrupt your operations to put a fence from that back, the, the parking island that has the landscaping and just go back to the corner and put up a fence there to, so that you can't see as much back into that area. It's just thought. I'm not, I'm not necessarily absolutely proposing that, but-
Right. And we're trying to help. Get it.
Kathy, you have any feeling about that?
Obviously, for, for traffic circulation purposes, it would have to provide, because you have to be able to get around and turn around and circulate around the-
I'm just talking about a fence on the property line.
No, I, on the property line?
Yeah.
Yeah, from that-
From that last island to the back. And I don't, yeah, we, I think we could do that. I don't see that being an issue.
Right there.
That's it. Oh, okay.
With the landscaping, work with, work with our architect, our landscape architect and-
And I'm just looking down, down the road that if someone comes in and develops a piece of property next to you-
You've got a fence there.
You've got a fence there that, and that would be an eight-foot solid fence.
Fence, board on board?
Well-
When you say solid, is that, or?
It could, it could, it's a vision fence.
Okay.
So it's, it's, you know, you can do vinyl fences, you can do board on board.
Board, yeah.
We could probably get specific.
You would want to modify number two.
Right. And yes, and the way we're screening that is with sufficient landscaping in the three islands that are in, that are internal to the parking area and then in the end, or the north end, and from that parking space to the corner of the property, an eight-foot vision fence, eight foot high.
Let's say that again.
So we're rewriting number two.
We're rewriting number two.
Well, you could, you could, you could take that, that first part. The existing container storage located at the north path shall be properly screened with-
Screened with landscaping in the three internal islands?
There's actually six there.
Six.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, we do them all, yeah. There's six, six landscape, parking islands and a, and a eight-foot vision fence from the back along the property line, the back island.
Well, let's, let's say on the west, west property line from the last island.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. Say like a, from the last island.
I don't think we got it. One more time.
We're working on it. We're getting there. We're getting there. Okay. The existing container storage located at the north end of the parking lot shall be properly screened with landscaping on the six parking islands and an eight-foot-
Solid fence.
Solid fence along the west property line from the northernmost island to the corner. And that's a little wordy. And again, I shouldn't be selling more, but I think it's also important we do the landscaping for the parking lot, because I think that can give us the most screening.
Yes, right.
Yeah, so.
At the entrance.
At the entrance, yes.
Which you show.
Yes.
So with the six internal islands and at the entrance?
Yes.
Don't tell Joyce I said that.
Is there anything else from the commission members? I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with six conditions, the second one being altered as described.
Second.
Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Kathy. She was, she was a big help.
Well, Kathy, thank you. Final site plan of a storage facility at 7840, 7870 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? I see. Will you please state your name and address for the clerk?
Good evening. My name is Jim Sapp. I'm the owner of Rise Mentor, 8070 Castleton Road, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46250.
Tell us a little bit about what you want to do on the site plan.
Okay, we're a co-warehousing company. It's, would be new to the Cleveland area. We have eight sites in the Midwest. I was very impressed that your staff came down to our Columbus facility. We're rapidly expanding and most city planners don't do that, so give her some credit. And I don't know who else was with you, Kathy.
The city manager and our economic development director.
That was great that you came down and actually saw. What we do is we have small warehouses in the back and offices in the front and some limited flex space. We're proposing the site plan above. We've made some edits, hopefully to comply with everybody. This is vacant land out on Tyler and Justin. I ask for your approval. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
No, certainly having to see the, see the property firsthand and example, their, their manager gave us a nice tour of the interior of the office space, exactly as they described, and also then gave us a tour of the internal of the, again, of the site and how, and we actually got to see one of the internal spaces and certainly seemed to be a good concept and we, again, appreciated, because we were having a hard time getting our head, head around what this was going to be like, so I think we certainly appreciated that once we went out there. We just noted some conditions on the, for, with regard to the final site plan, and as long as they're good with those, we're, we're good with the, the site plan.
I have liked us one exception on some of your, on the comments that, or maybe this isn't the right time. They asked for landscaping inside our gates. That's going to be difficult. We have a lot of truck traffic and van traffic. Just don't think it would live. And nobody's going to see it. It's behind all these buildings. It's behind fences. It would be difficult to sneak in landscaping, and I'm not sure it would make it through the snow and traffic.
Kathy?
There was a comment made in the landscape analysis section, and we didn't make it a condition other than just to indicate that the, that the landscaping plan shall conform to the chapter. If you're comfortable with what he's suggesting, then we are too.
And you've read the staff report and you're okay with the nine conditions, then?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything from the commission members? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with nine conditions. Second.
Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
I, I need to abstain because I represent the seller of this property.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. All right. The architectural review of a storage facility, 7840 through 7870 Tyler Boulevard. Tell us a little bit about the architectural side.
We're proposing to do some step up aesthetics on these buildings that face Justin and Tyler. We've come up with a company called Metal Span, and I'm not sure Kathy got this brochure yet this week, but what it basically is, it's panels, and you have some of them here in the Cleveland area. So they're panels and they're like a stucco look, but the benefit to us is they're very insulated. So these are going to go on the front of anything on a street and on the side. The back, we still propose straight metal, straight metal because of all the doors and the internal look and the cost. So we are making that change, and I think it'll be something we use in a lot of other cities. I did bring a piece of the, the fence, the fence along Justin and Tyler are also going to be this composite material, so it's not going to be wood that fades or blends over. And we do put the poles in eight foot. So we made that improvement in, actually in Fort Wayne. So I think we're trying to upgrade it. We have very little traffic, about 100 cars a day. We don't have a lot of traffic. Most of our tenants come in, store things, and leave for two to three weeks before they come back. The lighting is all internal, and we think we can comply with the architectural and landscaping standards.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from administration?
Nothing other than the conditions noted.
Mr. Varga?
Just a question about those panels. Is that a metal-faced panel or what is the, what is the facing of that?
I don't know.
It's not metal, so it's some-
Well, I think it is metal, but I think they put some kind of-
Coating?
Coating over it that looks like stucco. And it's, so it's stronger than, the problem with ephesus, we've been using some ephesus, it doesn't weather well and it punches in. So I can bring it up if you, it's metal. I mean, it's, or aluminum or something.
Well, and the elevations show this material as if it was stone. Is it-
The bottom's going to be stone.
Okay.
And it's going to be gray.
This is not the material that's giving the stone impression.
Right. You're right. We've been changing it almost daily.
Yeah, it's metal. Look, you can see that. Yeah, it's, you can see it on the side. It's a metal panel that's filled with-
So that will be above the stone.
Yes. On two sides, on the Justin and Tyler. In gray, not in that color. That's, the manufacturer only had that color as a sample.
They would send it back.
Daisy chain.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman? A question for the applicant. So that material that you just showed us with the, let's call it the stucco facing, is that slated for all of the elevations that face Tyler and Justin? It's visible from the thoroughfare.
Correct. Well, stone's going to be on the bottom.
Right.
Because that's the rules. And then that's going to be on the top instead of the metal.
That would be the dominant material we see from the street furniture?
Yes. It'll be the dominant, or it'll be the only, well-
In addition to the stone?
There'd be glass, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with two conditions. Second.
Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Abstain.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you. This one's going to be a wall.
We have an architectural review of a public facility at 6776 Heasley Road. Is that applicant here? Kathy, will you tell us a little bit about the pavilion?
I, I wish I could speak in, in great detail other than the information that's, that's been provided. This is a facility that's been long in the works, and it's intended to be for public use and public rental. Certainly, I was not part of the design, so I can, I can say I'm actually very pleased with the design. It, it really has a nice, warm, park-like feel. If, if you've ever been to the Environmental Learning Center in Concord, this has a very similar look to that. And again, that's a very inviting building. So I think it hits a multi-purpose, multi-functioning facility, and it's incorporated a lot of different materials into, into the design, which is something I know the commission always likes to see. So I think it will, it will serve the city well.
Thank you. Yeah, I, speaking for myself, I like it, and I'm glad it's another step forward in Springbrook Gardens, and it'll be something that the public will, will enjoy for years to come. I do have one condition I'd like to add, though. I'd like to see an AED device added somewhere in the building. Is there anything else from other commission members? You know, with that, I would entertain-
I'm just going to ask, is there some understanding about how this is going to operate? Is it going to be open to the public on a daily basis? Just, can you just walk in? Or will it be by reservation? Or will it be some other arrangement?
Well, I believe the rental space will certainly be by reservation. There is external restrooms that would, I would believe that would be used at any time, and then the internal ones would be with use of the facility.
So there's no, there's no way that people who are just walking around can, can use, gain shelter from this?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Other than going in the bathroom?
Correct.
Had anyone ever thought about just having some covered area that, that would allow for shelter in the, from the elements without having to go into the building?
I can't speak to the rest of the design plans for the, for the park. I would say that would be a question for our, our recreation director and, and city manager, but I know that there are more plans in the works. This is just one significant component that they wanted to see moving forward.
I agree. It's attractive, but apparently you're not going to be able to use it unless you rent it. And my concern would be that it's a big open space. People are walking around all the time. If you get caught in the rain, get caught in some clement weather, or you just want to get some relief from the sun, this facility doesn't provide you with any of that benefit.
Fully noted.
Okay.
And with that-
Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with two conditions. Second condition being the requirement of an AED device.
Second.
Samantha, please call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
I'm going to vote no, based on my comments.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Kathy, is there anything?
Nothing else for the commission. Thank you.
Here, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.